Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay.
Lean in.
Okay.
Don't start his time yet.
Start, okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeffrey Liken. I am a graduate of the Orange Schools, class of nineteen seventy-seven. I'm married to Tracy and have three children, all of whom went through the Orange Schools, grades K through twelve. My kids graduated in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-four. My occupation is as an attorney. I have lived in Pepper Pike since I was thirteen years old. My wife and I have owned a home in Pepper Pike for the past twenty-eight years. I have sat on the Orange School Board since two thousand and thirteen. I have been a member over the the past twelve years of many community groups, including the Quandas Club of Landers Circle, the Orange Alumni Association, of which I'm a life member, Orange Boosters, Orange Patroners, and the Orange Schools Foundation. Association through these, with these community groups, by attending their meetings, their events, by working with their members, and living in the community so long has enabled me to build relationships that have been so important to my work on the school board, and hopefully will be so in the future. They have allowed me, these relationships, to identify the community issues that are important, and more importantly, to find pathways and roadways to find solutions to those problems. This, I believe, is what distinguishes me from the other candidates here in this group tonight. Why am I running for school board? I'm running because I still have passion to give back to the school district that gave me so much. I still have passion to help kids like my kids were helped to, to, to prepare for life after high school and be productive community members. And I still have that passion to complete unfinished business of the school board, which needs to be finished. Thank you.
All right. Our next candidate is Julie Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm Julie Lawrence, and I'm honored to stand before you as a candidate for the Orange School District. I'm not just running for a seat, rather, I'm running for all our children. I'm a mother of three amazing kids. Each of them attend one of our district's schools. I have Inmoreland, Brady, and the high school. So when I say I'm invested in our schools, I mean quite literally. I live the experience of our district every single day. My daughter Phoebe has special needs, and through her journey, I've seen the power of compassionate education and how we can also do better. Professionally, I'm an accountant, bringing a strong financial background, having worked with Fortune five hundred nonprofit organizations, and I'm currently an entrepreneur. I understand budgets, strategic planning, how to make smart decisions that serve the long-term health of our school. But most importantly, I understand how to make those with heart. I'm running because I believe in student-centered decision-making. Every policy should begin with one question. Is this what's best for our kids? Transparency and trust. Families deserve to know how decisions are made and have a voice in sharing them. Support our teachers and staff because they are the backbone of our schools, and they deserve respect, resources, and recognition. Equity and inclusion. Every child, regardless of ability or background, should have access to the tools they need to thrive. I'm not a politician. I am a parent, a professional, and a passionate advocate for our children. I am here to listen, to learn, and to lead with compassion and integrity. So tonight, I ask for your support. Not just for me, but for the vision of our schools, where every child matters, every teacher is empowered, and every family feels heard. Let's build the future together. Thank you.
We have Rebecca Boyle at the far end. Thank you. Your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Boyle, and I'm honored to be running for my third term on the Orange School Board. My husband Jim, who's in the audience back there and will be talking later, have been residents of Orange for nearly twenty years. Our two children attended Orange from kindergarten through graduation. My daughter Janie graduated in twenty nineteen and my son Johnny in twenty twenty-two. Professionally, I'm a retired public educator, with over thirty years of experience in special education, school counseling, and as a college professor. I have a PhD in counseling and marriage and family therapy, and I currently work as a behavioral health therapist at a local pediatric practice. As you can see, I've devoted my life to education, children, and learning. And the truth is, public education is at a critical moment. I want to continue to be a strong, steady voice for Orange Schools and for public education as a whole. We're facing constant funding challenges from Columbus that threaten to weaken our schools, and I'm just not ready to step aside. The good news is, Orange Schools are thriving. We consistently rank them on the top districts according to the ODE report card, and we are the first in the state to return to pre-COVID levels in reading and math. Financially, we've been responsible stewards of our taxpayer dollars. We haven't asked for a general operating levy since two thousand eleven. We maintain the lowest tax rate in the eastern suburbs, in part because in two thousand twenty-three, we lowered our taxes by retiring two point two mils of bond debt while requesting only one point five, saving our taxpayers money. We've also listened to our stakeholders. We've enhanced safety and security with more cameras and added SRO and more patrols on campus. I look forward to hearing your thoughts, answering your questions tonight, and I hope you'll agree that experienced leadership matters, especially in the years ahead. Thank you.
Love that each of you did it in exactly the right time. That's fabulous and says something right away. However, we've had a technical problem, and because the livestream wasn't working properly when we started, I'm afraid I have to ask Ms. Nash to reread her opening statement so that those who are at home and are live streaming have the same opportunity to hear her as they did to the others. So those of us in, in the audience in person who heard it, you get to hear it again. I apologize to the three others who are not going to get to do yours again, but will get you plenty of time to answer questions. So again, I'm going to ask you to do it again.
No problem. Good evening again, and thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Siobhan Taylor Nash, and I'm running for Orange City School District Board of Education because I believe every student in our district deserves the opportunity to thrive, and every voice in our community deserves the chance to be heard. Since launching my campaign in May and with a consistent message, I've had the privilege of connecting with so many of you. On porches, at school events, in coffee shops, in living rooms, these conversations have confirmed what my family and I felt when we chose to make here our home. This is a community that truly values education, equity, and excellence. I live in Woodmere Village with my husband and our two sons. One is a proud Moreland Hills Elementary student and future Orange High School graduate, class of twenty thirty-seven, and the other is just starting out in the world, future graduate class of twenty forty-two. We're in it for the long term. Professionally, I bring experience in education, nonprofit leadership, student and community advocacy. I hold a doctorate in education, and I currently work with an equity design studio, managing multimillion-dollar projects focused on cross-sector collaboration to build stronger and better systems for communities. But more than credentials, I bring care. I lead with empathy, integrity, and a deep commitment to listening, learning, and acting in partnership with all stakeholders. We're at a pivotal moment for public education in Ohio and across the country. Now more than ever, we need leadership that's clear-eyed, future-focused, collaborative, and student-centered, and fiercely responsible. With your support, I'll bring a fresh equity-focused lens to the Orange City School District Board of Education and help shape a future rooted in trust, accountability, shared decision-making, and excellence for all. Thank you.
Okay, so tonight, now we're going to get to the questions that have been brought to our event through the opportunity in the community. These are questions that have been brought to us. Ms. Boyle, we're going to start it at your end.
Okay.
This is, this is the question that came in. Some candidates have chosen to get endorsements from political organizations and advertise them as, for this nonpartisan position as a school board member. Why do candidates think that it was necessary to do that? And are they interested in being a member of the school board because they are actually concerned with the district and the students and the community, or do they view the school board position as a resume builder and a stepping stone to a political career beyond this? We'll start with you, and you have up to two minutes to respond, please.
Well, as I stated earlier, I've been on the school board for twenty-seven, since twenty seventeen, and it is a nonpartisan position. And I am running again for school board because I feel it's important that we continue to fight for our public schools, keep our funding as strong as it is, so that we can keep the housing and the education for our students to be top-notch. I did receive, and I sought out, an endorsement from the Democratic Party. At this critical juncture, I felt it was important to get all of the support that I can and all of the resources that they can offer. However, I do realize that this is a nonpartisan race, and I'm not running on a Democratic platform. I'm running on my platform that is for kids and for the schools.
Thank you so much. Next.
Thank you. As I stated in my speech, I am not a politician. I am a parent. So it doesn't matter what political party the parents are. Every child still needs to be met with whatever needs, whatever enhancements they may need, whatever encouragement, whatever honors classes, to what degree that they can be a contributing factor to society. Thank you.
Sir.
That's an interesting question. As my fellow board members know, I fought vigorously to keep politics out of the school board. Politics entered the school board, we stopped serving the kids. It is a bipartisan organization, and politics and political views and parties have no business to be in the business of the school business. We're in the business of educating kids. I was asked to receive endorsements. I did not take them from different parties. I met with all the mayors or talked to the mayors, with the exception of the mayor of Hunting Valley. I told them, I'm not seeking their endorsement. I'm seeking their support. A very important issue for me. And we get involved in politics. We're not, we're going to stop educating kids. It's, it's just a, it's just a very dangerous place to cross.
Thank you. Please.
Thanks for that question. Endorsements are, endorsements are not oaths to an organization or an entity of people who are endorsing you. For me, endorsements signal opportunity or an engagement with leadership. They signal your preparedness to lead. I totally, I agree and understand that the school board race is nonpartisan, and politics, just like other folks here on this, as candidates, politics do not belong in the schools. We should be in the business of educating students and educating them fully and centering the work around the students, whatever their needs may be. I did also seek an endorsement from the Democratic Party, but that is because I, I felt like I needed to have support to show that I am prepared and ready, along with the experience that I have. I have received other endorsements from the mayor of Woodmere Village and county council folks who have opened their arms to support me and receive endorsements. So I'm here to advocate for students first. Does not matter what political affiliation you are at all. Students don't walk around with political affiliation t-shirts on. And so our work is rooted in what they, what they need, what the students need.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next question goes in a slightly different direction. Do you believe school board members should have the authority to overrule the professional judgment of certified librarians and teachers in deciding which books students can access in classrooms or in the school library? And if so, under what circumstances does the school board take precedent? We'll start with Ms. Lawrence, please.
I do not believe that the parents should be able to tell the teachers how to teach. I had, do have a child with special needs. She has Down syndrome. I do not go into the classroom to tell the teachers how to teach her. I am not the expert. So therefore, I don't think that we should be able to, we should let the teachers and the experts do their job. Thank you.
Sir.
Could I ask that question repeated one more time? It was a little long for me.
Back to it, just one second.
I wrote it down, but
Okay, it says as follows. Do you believe school board members should have the authority to overrule the professional judgment of certified librarians or teachers in deciding which books students can access in classrooms or libraries? If so, under what circumstances?
This kind of goes back to the political issue, as we are under some political constraints with new laws being proposed and being pressed upon school districts, notably the Parrot's Village, but we, I'm an attorney. I'm not a school individual. I've been on the board for twelve years. I've learned a lot about the board. But I am certainly not going to tell a teacher or librarian, and I don't believe I have that authority as well, to tell a teacher or librarian what book is best for our kids. Supervise the superintendent. The superintendent may bring concerns to us. If the superintendent thinks there's some concerns, then the board should consider that and have a discussion with the superintendent. A majority vote wins. But our educators educate, and the board members supervise what the superintendent and the treasurer does. Thank you.
Next, please.
Sure. Thank you. I, I believe parents have a right to voice their concerns, but those concerns shouldn't result in neglecting what the professionals in the classroom and libraries are, are tasked with doing. I believe in the professionals' ability to, to, to educate and to arm, to arm the board, as well as the superintendent, with materials and guidance needed to understand what's happening at the classroom level. I don't believe that the school board has the authority or should go in and delegate what's happening in a specific classroom. We, as the school board, look at the policies and landscape policies, and we also evaluate the superintendent and the treasurer. What's happening in the classroom on a day-to-day basis is the administration responsibility, but backed by the, the school board. So all in all, the answer to that is no, I do not believe that we should override what professionals are saying in the classrooms. Thank you.
So the school board hires the superintendent, and then the superintendent is, then hires his staff. That includes the curriculum director. It includes the teachers. It includes the librarians. There is a guidelines for books that they choose, either for the library or for curriculum, and those guidelines have to be followed by the teachers. And if there is a complaint by a parent, we go back to the guidelines. I shouldn't say we as the school board, but the, the curriculum director, the librarian, and the teacher, and they look through those guidelines, and they make a determination whether that book is appropriate for the age, the grade, the subject matter, all of the above. The school board puts their faith in the superintendent, in him hiring his staff. It is up to them to make the correct choice and the appropriate choice for books for our students. So the short answer, no.
Okay. The next question kind of goes, again, a slightly different direction, but these are questions from the community and, and are appropriate to be put to each and every one of you. With state legislative leaders actively calling public schools, quoting here, unsustainable, unquoting, while they simultaneously funnel, funnel vast amounts of public money into private and charter schools, how do you, as a member of the school board, plan to stand up for Ohio and Orange Public Schools in the direction that the legislation is taking it differently? We will start with you, sir, Mr. Liken.
Thank you. Well, it's just what we've been doing. There's been an attack on school funding that started, started long ago in the state legislature, and I get the impression the state legislature just doesn't like public schools. From, you know, not allowing curiosism in balances from the previous year, destroying the real estate tax system. I mean, it's all been threatened. It's been passed. There's new, the governor vetoed a lot of it. There's been overriding going on with the vetoing, and there's more to come. We need, as a school board, to inform you, the electorate, our constituents, what's going on, to inform you of who to contact, who to, who to, to complain to, or who to voice your opinion to, so we can get a change, because your vote is your most powerful weapon in, in, in the whole ordeal. We also, as the school board currently is doing, we work through the Alliance of Higher Education. That's our lobbying group to lobby these, these legislatures, legislatures to fight the change. We have the Ohio School Boards Association and all the associations affiliated with the schools that we work with to fight this legislation. But we need to fight that in the legislation. The courts aren't going to work. The courts are a temporary remedy, and things just get changed according to the court's decision so that they can still meet their needs. We need to use our vote and to lobby our legislatures. That's how we fight it. And that's how the school board has been fighting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to each and every one of you, because this is livestreamed, to kind of lean into your mic. So as we all get comfortable and lean back, it gets a little harder for those at home to catch all the words that you are saying, and they're important. So thank you. Ms. Nash.
Sure. Thank you. A part of, a part of the issue with what's going on at the legislature is locally in Orange schools, I think we need to arm our voters and our parents with more information more frequently, early, and more consistently. The power is in the voters, just like Mr. Liken said, that the power is in the voters. And if we bring opportunities to our, to our parents more frequently, we can empower them early so that they know what they're planning for and they know what pieces of legislation could be coming. I think it's unfair sometimes for us to have the expectation that parents are just following everything that we're following, because we are the professionals in the space doing that thing. We understand it a lot better. And so one of the things that I did on, with my meeting greet that I had, excuse me, earlier this year, is that I brought in a nonpartisan group called Honesty for Education, and they gave a, a nonpartisan view of what Orange schools looks like. That's the first time that happened and brought them in and welcomed anybody to attend, and it gave the attendees, parents, and others an opportunity to hear what's going on in Columbus and how that could potentially impact what's happening here in Orange schools. Additionally, I think that we should also take opportunities when we have PTA events Additionally, I think that we should also take opportunities when we have PTA events, athletic events, to engage with parents, just a simple handout or a simple table that says, hey, here's a pamphlet you can get about what's happening at the state level that could impact us. And so I think we need to take some more creative measures to include voters and parents earlier, more often, more frequently, and more consistently on what's happening in Columbus.
Thank you. Ms. Boyle.
Okay, so this is essentially why I'm running. My kids are graduated. I wasn't going to run again, but then the attacks on public education started. So I've decided that I want to stay, and I want to fight. I've been doing it for eight years. Several years ago, some of you may recall, when Hunting Valley tried to leave our district, it was a backdoor, dead-of-night amendment that they slipped in at the last minute. We had 24 or 48 hours, and we called and called, and we wrote letters, and we talked to our lobbyist, and the governor line item vetoed that. So I've already been in the fight. My fellow board members have already been in this fight, and that's why I'm running. I think it's really important that we keep our voters and our constituents abreast of the situation, and our board and our superintendent have done that. When the budget bill was coming down, we were sending out messages to our parents to tell them, hey, this is coming down the pike, right? This is how you can call. So we have been keeping them informed. Can it be more often? I don't know. At some point, you flood it, and they don't listen to it anymore. So I think we're trying to be strategic about it. But I am here to continue to fight. And also, back in June, when we had to approve the Parents' Bill of Rights, I was very outspoken about this. There was an article about it in the Chagrin Valley Times, and I essentially said that we need to stand up for our kids. We cannot let what's going on in Columbus harm them in any way. We need to make sure that we protect them and our staff. Thank you.
We live in a community with many options for schools. One-third of my house is not eligible for voucher due to her disability to attend many of these schools. We need to keep our funding within the district. Our public school is also a part of our community. If we don't have a thriving district, we don't have a thriving community. Our district has done a great job to get the communication out on how to reach our governors and legislators. Thank you.
Okay. The last question is perhaps the most controversial of the ones that have come in. It talks about the idea of coming out of Columbus, the potential for some religious information, either coming into the classroom, or children having an opportunity to opt out of time during the regular public school day for religious studies, or to walk away from classrooms because of what is being on the curriculum at that time and feel that that is inappropriate for their particular child. I'd like to know how you each feel about that particular question as it came in. We'll start with Ms. Nash. Thank you.
Yes. So just to clarify, can you repeat the last part, just like the last line?
I think the idea was about the idea whether children can be taken out of a regular classroom day as an opt-out for religious study, or to opt out of a particular classroom curriculum for a period of time because of a family disagreement with that particular curriculum or that topic.
Okay, thank you for clarifying the question. So I have hosted four, six, I'm sorry, six listening tours since September, and I am literally taking a table out of my trunk and sitting down in different neighborhoods and talking to people and hearing what they are saying. And one of the questions that came up recently in a listening tour was about opportunity to engage with cultural information in classrooms, so very similar to this. There is a point where the board does, the district does a great job of it, honoring the diversity and the cultural diversity that exists within our school district. And that is a part of my work as an equity consultant. I look at these things daily. How can we include others in the practice? I think that this is a conversation that we should open, but I don't engage, I don't believe that it is the ability of the board to create a policy without listening to those who are engaging in the work. So people who are, the students, the parents, we need to involve them in the process of deciding what that looks like, what that could look like in our school district. But most importantly, we need to make sure that we're honoring the diversity amongst our residents, amongst our students, and honoring them in that space.
Thank you. Ms. Boyle.
All right. So Orange is lucky to have so many different private schools around us. There's a lot of choice here, so you can choose to go public, or you can choose to attend one of the private schools, one of the parochial schools, one of the religious schools. We take several days off already for religious holidays, and I think that we do our best to accommodate any other student that needs days during their religious observations. And I have not had anyone comment on this to the board, as far as I know, about needing more time during their religious observation and not getting an excused absence. I would say that we would need to take this on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, Orange does a lot to include our diverse population. There are several things that the students do at all levels that highlight the diversity in our district, and we celebrate everyone that goes to Orange, and I think that's what makes us great.
Thank you. Next.
I have personally been asked this question as a running candidate, and I've had many discussions with a lot of parents. They are concerned. As I've kind of explained to them, I have, in my home, spent a lot of time raising my children with our religious beliefs, as they so have too, and we come from a lot of religious backgrounds. And I do believe that we need to definitely keep the two separate, because I, you know, until my children are of a certain age where they choose that they want to explore, they certainly may, that is their choice. But I think with what we have, we offer so many older cultural and with part of our education, that I think our religion should be with our parents and how they want to raise their individual children on their own. Thank you.
You, sir.
Actually, we have a board policy that allows kids to opt out a period of school for religious purposes, and it's my understanding that the law that supports that. It would not be in our policy if there's not a law that supports that. So it is the rule right now, and I think recently, I think just two or three months ago, it was extended to allow the child, if they have a religious reason, to opt out more than one period. And, you know, this is the law that the school has to follow. We can't not follow laws and lose funding and have commotions to get involved in politics again. But, you know, it's a way to separate church and state, the old amendment to our constitution that allows people to entertain or maintain their religious beliefs and separate them from the schools. I will stress very much, though, that if a kid does opt out, or a student does opt out for religious purposes during the school day, they are still responsible for their homework, they are still responsible for their studies, and they're still responsible to make up their time with the school.
Thank you each and all for the answers to these questions. There are no other questions from the community, so at this moment in time, I'm going to ask each of you to have a one-minute closing. And so I don't know where we are down the line, but I think we'll just start with Ms. Lawrence. If you're ready, I'm going to ask you to begin for us. Thank you.
Thank you again for having me here tonight. I do want to ensure that every child deserves to be seen, to be supported, and to be celebrated for who they are. That is the kind of district that I want to build. I am here not only for the children, but for our community. We bought our house here intending to stay here for a very long time, so I would like to see all of this through so that I'm on the other side to see how our district continues to thrive as I get my children through their school district. I would also like to point out that with Scott not coming back into the candidacy, that he will leave a void of a financial integrity, that with my accounting background, I hope to bring that to the budget and to all the financial concerns that we have coming down our pike, because there will be a lot. And I would like to also state that I am part of the Booster's treasurer, and so bringing that knowledge and that community and that base to the district, this just enhances the amount of volunteer work that I'm willing to do for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Lichen.
Thank you. My decision-making process is simple. It's guided by one principle, what is best for kids. My goal as a board member is simple. Work best to enable Orange schools to graduate well-rounded individuals who are able to go to life after high school and live through the challenges of a global society. Fulfilling these goals will serve parents and graduating kids that become productive community members. Will benefit community members by maintaining desirable property values for their homes and a desirable place to live. If you vote for Lichen on November 4th, I promise not to be derailed in these goals and not to change this decision-making process. I will be doing what's best for kids in Orange schools. I want to thank Mayor Klein. I want to thank Anna Girardi for having this evening and giving us this opportunity to speak to you, community members. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks again for the opportunity to be a part of tonight's forum. Thanks to the mayor in Orange Village and all who had a hand in planning this event. Most importantly, thank you, folks online and folks in person, the community for your questions and your presence here tonight, and your commitment to Orange schools. I'm a parent of a current Orange school student, and I am a lifelong public servant, and I'm an advocate for education. I bring not just experience, but empathy, equity, and collaboration with a deep belief in our school's potentials. If elected, I will lead with intention, accountability, a fresh perspective, prioritizing whole-child learning, transparent budgeting, strong partnerships with all stakeholders. I believe solutions exist at the intersection of our unique lived experiences, and leadership should bridge divides, elevate diverse voice, and ask bold questions that move us forward. I respectfully ask for your vote, and I invite you to learn, to lead, and to make a difference. That's why I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you to everyone who asked such thoughtful questions tonight, and to Mayor Klein, Barbara Greenberg, and to the team who organized the event. As I mentioned earlier, we've accomplished a lot during my time on the board, and I chose to run again because I want to continue to advocate for our students and our staff. I bring experience and a deep understanding of our district's needs. I've spent 15 years as a parent in the Orange schools, and as they worked their way through the different buildings, I was involved in many of the clubs and activities that Orange brings. This perspective allows me to keep a close eye on what's happening in Columbus. Our board has been proactive in protecting Orange schools from harmful legislation. I will continue to do so and fight for our kids. I respectfully ask for your vote for the Orange School Board. Experienced leadership matters, especially in the years ahead. Together, we can keep the Orange schools strong, well-managed, and focused on the future of our children. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes this portion of the program. All right, so I'm going to invite each and every one of you to exit your seats so we can refill them with people who are running for city council. Thank you.